Twenty-four Board of Commissioners meeting. I would ask you that you please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the rear of the chambers. And if you'd like to speak on a particular item, please fill out that speaker request form and turn it in to Holly Hennies, who's sitting in the front here to the right of the dais. I might mention that Commissioner Lloyd LeCroy will not be here the day he's on holiday. And at this time, I will call the meeting to order and ask that Commissioner Drews lead us with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of the agenda.
It's moved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor? Reply by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the consent agenda, consent agenda, and I'll recognize Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the special meeting of January 31st, 2024. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from February 6th, 2024. Number seven is to approve the permit to occupy the right-of-way and road closure/traffic control for the 2024 Deadwood-Michelson Trail Marathon. And number eight is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of January 2024. And Commissioners, at this time, I'd like to request that you poll number eight, please, on the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll poll number eight for discussion.
Chairman.
Commissioner Headcut.
Number five, please.
And number five. We'll take a motion to approve items six and seven.
I apologize. It's number six. Number six, not five.
Number what?
Number six, not number five.
Okay, number six.
Chairman, sorry.
Then I take a motion to approve number five and seven.
So moved.
Fair enough. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Reply by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The same. Okay, we'll go to item number six.
Number six is, was an executive session item. And why I pulled it is Commissioner Blaster and I have done some research. In this case, we looked at Minnehaha County for their personnel issues and what they do up front with their personnel issues. Travis, did you look up the agenda on that?
Yeah, you know, Chairman, it would be good to, I mean, if you want to see it, we can pull up the website for it, just to kind of see how it's presented. If you wouldn't mind, if we could have Holly pull it up so we can kind of show you. But basically, on their agendas for personal actions, exactly what we do, they actually put it in an agenda item, personnel actions, and then they list out and they put it out there in the public. So the things that we've been doing in executive session, they put it out in the public. And that's the Minnehaha January 2nd meeting for 2024, and it's item 13. Just to kind of give it, what it looks like.
That's under number?
Item 13.
Thank you, Travis.
Right there. And so they listed under as personnel actions, and then they do the anniversaries, the volunteers, but they also do the personnel actions approval and notice.
Can you click on, there you go.
So this is more for consideration, so that we can see that this stuff puts it out there in a way that it's public knowledge, so they can see everything that's going on and it's easily referenced. So I think part of what we've been talking about is we want to make sure that public information is getting out in the public, and this is, we're seeing Minnehaha County do this. So I think that it's something that we should, if not this exact way, we should look at adopting something similar for our, for our meetings, for the public to have information. Talks about step increases, promotions, new hires, and the actions for the Commission's approval, so.
Chairman.
Commissioner Headcut.
So when you give raises, whether it be department heads, or you had approval of reclassification, you also had the placement of department heads that were placed at higher wages. It should be on a consent agenda or on an agenda for personnel. We used to do this in Pennington County with John, but for some reason, we started putting them in executive session. So if you look at this and you look at our old meetings, it shows that when we had a packet of exceptions for step increases, promotions, and different variables for, including department heads, they should have been, I believe, open to the public, and it should have been on the agenda, based on what we've seen here, and we've seen on other areas that are open to the public. So the public needs to know, and that's what our job is. It needs to know, it's not necessarily that they have to agree with the raises or I have to agree with the raises. It's so the public, they're the ones paying our salaries. They should know what we're doing on an agenda instead of executive session. When you put it in executive session, it's not open to the public. This is a perfect example of things we were doing, and I have a packet, 2023 exceptions that have a bunch of stepping increases and other things that we've been doing in executive So when we're doing the county's business, it's open to the public. The public pays our wages, and we need to be transparent to them. So when people were saying, and I wouldn't go back into executive session, that's why. Now, I needed to know the proof, and so did Travis, to show that we weren't just making it up. It was done before with John. They do it here in Minnehaha. They have 197,000 constituents, but we pulled our department heads back, and their agenda and their raises, back into executive session, came out and gave raises. Now, against raises, I was against putting it not in the public so the public could see it. When you don't put it on an agenda, they don't understand it. They should understand what they're, what they're paying for. So now on, I would hope that we would understand, we would look at this, and kept saying, we need sub-training. We need to look at what is fact and information based on executive session. I didn't say them, I said us, all of us. So when department heads do their promotions, their step increases, some of their actions can be on a consent agenda. It doesn't have to have us in the back all the time with executive session. That's all I'm asking. I don't think that's hard to ask. We did it before. I'm asking if we can do it again, and we do it by the public knowing the county business.
Commissioner Headcut. So when was the last time that Pennington County used that format?
I'll have to look. When John was here, we used it all the time.
So that would, we'd have video of that, right? That we could look at it?
Yes, sir.
I'm all for, you know, taking a look at it.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Ross Connect. It's a little bit simplified when you see it like this as well. If you look at under John on HR when he was here, he put a lot of this stuff, when you see step increases and some promotions and some other things that we had to change. It was straight up. So I'm just asking for that. Travis is asking for that, and would hope in the future that we could move forward and get some training and make sure that we are doing the same thing. It's very transparent. It's very easy for the public. It's easy for us. So it doesn't, doesn't just make it easy for the public, it makes it easy for us to understand what's happening. And then if there's issues, we can always pull them off if we have a personnel issue with one of them or something that's happening, or talk to the department ahead of time if there is an issue. So just saying, I hope in the future that we can move forward with this and make things more transparent, watch what Minnehaha does, watch what the other counties do.
Well, thank you, and Travis, for taking the time to explore that. I don't, I think we, as a Commission, we can't be transparent enough, so, like I said, I'm willing to take the next step to look at that particular format.
Thank you.
And with that, I would ask Holly to, item number eight.
Mr. Chair, I think we have to approve this one first.
Excuse me.
I think we have to approve this item first.
What's that?
I think we have to approve this item first before moving to the next item.
Item number six. Want a motion on that?
I motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting, February 6th, 2024.
Sir. I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Before, before we go on, was there any comments from the audience on this particular item number six? If not, we'll move on to item number eight.
Commissioners, the reason that I asked you to poll this is that the list that was presented was missing five individuals, and so I wanted to make sure that the board was acknowledging the most updated version that was provided to us this morning, so that those five individuals are recognized properly. So just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that.
Okay. Thank you for the clear.
We need the same motion to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of January 2024.
I make that as a motion. Second. You got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Back to the Commission. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we're on to regular agenda items. 900 concourse remodel. I'll recognize manager Kevin Burton.
Morning Commissioners. We've got TSP here in the audience today to give us an update on the 900 concourse design process. So we've completed schematic design, we've gone through design development, and we're entering into construction documents. That's where all the nitty-gritty goes in, but we have the, a lot of the basics done. We're trying to finalize some of the interior design and exterior design elements, so they can finalize our drawings, but wanted to give you guys an update on that kind of stuff. We're not voting on anything today, but we do hope that with this presentation, with the samples we have back in the conference room, and some other stuff, that you could forward us a design direction to help them finish their tasks. So with that, if nobody has any questions, I'll invite TSP up.
Chairman.
Commissioner Headcut.
Kevin, I thank you for the pictures. That's what I was talking about. Seeing some of this stuff, we don't always know what you're talking about. At least I don't. I'll just say aye instead of everybody. So when you see the pictures and seeing what you're doing, it's worth a thousand words. So I appreciated that you did the packet and you actually laid it out, so it's pretty simplified, and just pretty impressed, so thank you.
Picture's worth a thousand words, right?
Thank you.
Just a little bit of caution on the pictures, is that they give a overall kind of feeling of the room. The finishes are very hard to depict exactly through the rendering programs that they have, which is why we have the actual samples in the back room, so that you can see on what looks like a whitish background actually has quite a bit of texture and color to it. So it's something that you can't see unless you physically are looking at the sample.
It gives a basic idea, which is good, of what the, what it's going to look like. That's the, that's more what I was thinking, is you're going to do the colors, you're going to do the stuff, but kind of, they have two podiums, they have some other stuff that's going on that Holly had sent to us ahead of time. I appreciated Ms. Holly sending those, because that's what I was thinking, is how are we laying out the front? How are we doing with people with disabilities? How are we doing two speakers? A lot of times you're crowded or they're mixed, mixing stuff together or whatever, trying to talk with someone right next to them instead of a little bit of space. Some people can sit down. Made a huge difference, so thank you for the pictures.
And I'll let the design experts explain all of that process.
So Kevin, the Commission's already toured the building once, and I'm assuming that as things progress, we'll take another tour, just so we can stay on top of it, see how things are progressing.
Sure. Anytime you guys want, just let us know. We'll be happy to, to take you through there. Of course, we're not done in design yet, so the building has very minimal change since the last time you saw it. We are looking at trying to remove any of the surplus systems furniture from the building before construction starts. Other than that, there's really not going to be any work until we get a contractor on board and gone.
Let's actually refer to once we start construction, so we can get in there and just watch the progress. Any other questions for Kevin?
Okay, I'm going to invite up our capable team. TSP.
Good morning Commissioners. I am Kelly Ostrillo, Director of Practice and Project Manager with TSP. As Kevin mentioned, we'd like to walk you through the progress of the renovation design at the 900 Concourse Drive facility. So for anyone who's less familiar with the design process, as Kevin mentioned, we are currently in the construction documents phase of the project. So we've gone through conceptual design, schematic design, and design development, where we've worked with the department heads and their staff to understand what they need within their departments, and the floor plan layouts, adjacencies, flows, how we can improve anything from this facility as we renovate the new facility. And we're getting into a construction document phase where we are really working out the details to provide the contractor with what they need to know to complete the renovation of the building. So we'll start with an overall floor plan. This is a really simplified version of the floor plan. Of course, there's a lot more detail in the actual documents. This diagram is here to show you the adjacencies of the departments, and really just a general idea of which departments in the building are in the building and how they will be located. Areas you see in gray on this image are really out of the scope of the renovation. Certainly will be utilized, but will be left mainly as-is, as they currently are in the Pretty limited changes to the site will be made. There's some parking lot improvements that, that may need to be completed. We're also looking at adding an additional entrance into the parking lot here at the southwest corner. Another addition to the site will be a proposed additional building and grounds maintenance building. Here on this site, you're seeing two potential locations for that building, with the preferred being the more centralized location in the parking lot. Part of this direction is to help save some cost in limiting the, the long run of utilities to serve that new building.
One other consideration for the, the building being in the middle, there, it's right across from the loading dock, which is B and G space within the building. The other thing it does is it protects the front of that shop building from the northern weather. We get a lot of snow blow coming from the north down to the south. So having anything along the north front, which, when she gets to the exterior renderings, we'll see some of the, the ways we're trying to mitigate some of the snow blowing into the front of the building, and still allowing passage in and making it a little easier for our B and G snow removal teams to, to keep that clear and safe for the public. So one of the options is, it not only saves us money in utilities, but it also helps prevent or mitigate a lot of that snow removal from piling up in front of that shop.
So Carolyn, what will be in, in that building?
So that's going to have the, all the lawn equipment, mower. We own the property adjacent to the north, so we've got a lot of mowing, weed whacking, that kind of stuff we have to do, so that's all in there. We've got a skid steer, a forklift, and a snow plow that'll all be housed in there. There's also a little section where there's an office maintenance, a repair space, so if they need to repair equipment, any of that kind of stuff, there's a restroom out there, so the maintenance guys can dress down or use the facilities without having to come in the building. And then there's also a storage loft built in, one-third of the building, that is for all of the HVAC filters and all of that kind of stuff. If you look at the roof of this plan right here, every one of those little gray dots is a heating unit, and each one of those heating units takes one to four filters. So there's quite a bit of filter storage that has to happen, and those get changed quite frequently to keep the air fresh and, and the machines working to their utmost efficiency.
Here you just see a third option that we considered for the location of that building to really minimize the cost with the utilities. This, this building doesn't lend itself so well to the site and reduces the parking quite significantly in that southwest corner.
So Kelly, has that, has that location been ruled out then for the?
Yes.
I agree with that.
So I'll walk you through a few of the exterior renderings, starting with an image of the current building. This is the current entrance as it is today. What we've noticed is with that entrance on the north side, there are challenges with snow and winds in the winter, with very few barriers. As we started, we looked at pushing a new storefront system out to the south, as well as a larger canopy overhead. We've also considered adding some, some concrete seat wells out front. This, this option came with some cost and some challenges. There was concern about this really not limiting the snow entering the building, so we've really taken a second look at that, and what you see here is the proposed direction for this exterior. We are still bringing in a new canopy on that south side, which does not currently exist, and pushing that front vestibule out, so the, the exterior doors will be further from the interior vestibule doors. Here you can see an overhead plan of what that will look like, just pushing that vestibule out to the north.
There is a significant cost savings with this option, is we can reuse the double doors that are on the inner, and we're just bringing those out. We've got limited amount of storefront we're adding, and then we're really limiting the amount of the canopy that we're adding. What we had before was 10-plus feet, and we're reducing that down to a three-foot canopy, so it'll still keep the snow from falling directly in front of the doors. This also gives us a straight shot, so for plowing snow, we can just come straight across and make sure that we've got the, those doors available for the public entry. You can also notice we've relocated the flagpole and those planters that were out in the original drawing. That allows us to get equipment to make sure we get those paths of travel very good and clear for the public.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Where are you moving the flagpole to?
That's to be determined. We, we want to check with all the, the right entities to make sure that it's in the proper location. We also only had a single flagpole, so we're looking at putting three in. Where we would like to put it is at the entry drive, where the main building sign is. We already have lighting out there, so we can light the poles. They're a center item, but we're not sure if that meets all of the flag criteria, so we're, we're checking into entities that be, to make sure that we're complying with any of the flag requirements.
Thank you.
In addition to the work at the main entrance, we're also proposing the addition of two new exterior vestibules. These would be really an exit from the Treasurers Department and a deliveries door for the auditors. Similar approach to the main storefront, in keeping with the, the existing conditions of the building, having storefront and a similar canopy. We won't necessarily come in with a green canopy and a yellow canopy, we are just showing examples of how the Pennington County standard colors could be brought into the building. These could, of course, be a standard storefront metal, if preferred. I'd invite Morgan Phillips, our interior designer, to come up as well. We are going to share a few interior renderings of this space, primarily the front entry and the commission chambers, starting with the very first pass through the commission. This is the original dais rendering. When we took this approach, we looked at overall cost and considered the finishes and felt that we could save some cost here by limiting the, the extreme finishes in the room. So this was the original, and then we've, we've taken a step back to look at other ways to approach the dais. What you do see here is the lowered, lowered counter for individuals who may need that setting, and then the two separate podiums for speakers.
So for this next space, this is kind of the option one that we were working through to just present to you guys, and kind of what we wanted to do really with the direction of this space was kind of going with what the existing conditions are with the building to save costs, and also just carry that same kind of design throughout the space. So in this first option, on the back kind of wall, feature wall behind the dais, we have some acoustical wood paneling, and it's in kind of a darker, rich color. A lot of that existing conditions out in the current building is pretty more modernized. We wanted to carry that same feeling throughout. And then in order to save costs, we also got rid of that wood slot feature in the first rendering that we just showed you, to continuing with just a normal acoustical paneled ceiling, and then having a little bit more of a nicer feature with doing JIP on either side with some different lighting options as well. And then in this next option, we're lighting up the space, and so we, again, wanted to go with an acoustical felt background, so that's also what's on that back wall. It's a lighter option. It does have some movement, as Ken had mentioned, so we did bring some physical samples, so you guys could review those. And then I know there was a couple of comments that people said that they really liked having kind of that accent of the support staff, the lower end, having a different material. So we have that on the two lower ends, and then the dais has more of a kind of feature of a nice wood, plastic laminate going throughout, which is also more of a cost-effective option moving forward in the space. And then for flooring, we are keeping with what's existing in the current building as well, so that's what's shown in this rendering. And then this is the front vestibule kind of main waiting lobby area, so we wanted to do some features. So what you can see there is actually a little bit of a Mount Rushmore, and then we have Badlands on either side where those waiting areas are. It's just glass, and then we decided to kind of wrap that glass in a more kind of see-through space, just to give it a nice design development sense. This is a little bit more of a flat wall. We wanted to give it a little bit more of an interest.
Just a quick update for the public. They haven't seen or know what's, what this looks like. So just so the, the public understands what, what we're looking at, is when you come in the main entryway, the two TVs mounted on the wall, those will be for information and for direction. The glass vestibules on either side of the TVs are areas where people can gather and wait for their turn to come into the, the chambers for a commission meeting. Gives a little bit, separates them from the paths of travel, so other people go into other places in the building, aren't interfering with people waiting. Our current, our current setup right now, we have people out in the hallway that gather, and it makes it difficult for the other patrons of the building to, to walk through. So we were, we're looking at a way to do that, but still let the natural light in, hence the glass, and then for security purposes, other people being able to see in there, so that we don't have people hiding. So this lends itself really well to having different groups be able to meet in different space and stage and wait their turn to come into the chambers, as well as we have plenty of room within the chambers. So this will be, have monitors inside of it that is monitoring the, the commission meetings, just like we have out in the hallways now, but takes it out of that public walkway. So if there's any other explanation I can give on that. One of the reasons we added some of the mural and some of the etching on the glass was when we walked in, it felt very sterile, very sanitary, and it would be very nice to have a very welcoming, for the public to be able to come in, given the features of what Pennington County has in it. So of course, our national treasures of the Badlands, Mount Rushmore, those kind of things were kind of the focal point, and as you can see, we've got the Pennington County logo and stuff in the background. So those are just some of the, the little design processes we, how we landed on what we've got here.
Chairman. Chairman.
Commissioner Headcut.
So do you have the difference in cost for each one? So do you have the difference in cost for each one of the changes in the different areas that you want to put? It would be nice to be able to see that and then be able to make that decision somewhat, not always based on cost to a certain extent, but you want to be cost effective and still make it look nice. How about that?
Yeah. We're, we're not done with the design elements. So until we get the design elements finished, we can't estimate those. We did get an estimate of the DD phase, which is design development phase. We're still within the budget of what we were planning of six to seven million. And that was including some of the design or the deduct alternates that were there. We're, the back parking lot, south parking area is in need of a lot of repair, but it's almost a million dollars. So we can, we can remove a million dollars from our budget by just not repairing that back asphalt at this point and working it into a, a standard maintenance budget later. It's not segregated to the point where it's not usable. It's just, it's starting to show it's aged and it's reached the end of its useful life. We've got another deduct alt for the maintenance shop. I do think that's a very viable and necessary component for this site. But if money gets really, really tight, that is something we're bidding as a design alternate. So, but as we finalize some of these design options, then we can certainly move forward with there. A vinyl mural on the wall is not very expensive and adding some etching to the glass really is not a huge cost increase. It may be, you know, $5,000, but as the focal point for the county, we're trying to do it with paint and simplified items, not, not anything glorified. The etchings on the glass could also just be vinyl, so they could be vinyl stickers instead of actual etching. Problems with that, people pick at it, it can peel. Etching is a lifetime thing, so it'll last forever.
Nice. Thank you two for coming up today.
Certainly.
We appreciate you.
Yes. And Commissioner Headcut, to your point, we have, we did want to share a few of the budget options, that budget control items that we have. We did want to note that 20%, about 20% of the existing building remains entirely untouched. There is a more significant of number of finishes that will be, continue to be reused within the building than that. We are planning to maintain the existing ceiling where it's feasible, salvaging ceiling tiles and reusing again where that's feasible as well for construction. The majority of the doors that will be demoed are planned to be reused in the new renovation. Finishes are very economical with the appropriate higher finishes where they should be for maintenance and longevity of the facility. Furnishings, the team has worked to reuse many of the existing cubicles in the building from the newer renovation and repurpose those within the space. Again, we discussed the site and really maintaining the majority of the parking that's there as well. Mechanically and electrically, the systems are in, in good shape. Planning to reuse the existing rooftop units with just updated ductwork and zoning within the areas of renovation where it's possible. And we've really limited the amount of new plumbing and slab work, which can be a significant cost to the project. Again, with that prior renovation, there is a, a good amount of LED lighting in the building too. So we'll reuse that as where it's practical as well.
I appreciate that, Ms. Kelly. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
So the building committee, we, we thought we'd reach out to the commission just to get an idea of what their preference would be relative to option one and option two. Option one being the darker theme and option two would be the lighter theme. If there's any general consensus to kind of help the building committee going forward.
Mr. Chair. I would recommend option two, the lighter option, if it was me.
Okay.
Chairman.
I, I really don't have a preference. Commissioner Headcut.
It'd be nice to see the space again, because then you kind of get a picture of again what you're putting lighter or darker in something. For me, it's just going to look at it. So I'll make time hopefully with Kevin soon. Not that I'm the final, but for me, for my input, it'd be nice just to see it and Ms. Kelly and I forgot your first name.
Morgan.
Ms. Morgan are there. It's kind of nice for having them explain it to us of why the lighter, the darker is going to make the difference.
Sure.
On it for the public and for us, mostly for the public. So I appreciate it.
Any other questions for the ladies? So today there's no motion and, and keeping in mind that Commissioner La Croix is not here, but at least I think we've got some direction that we can go forward and present to the building committee.
Thank you.
So thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Chair.
Kevin.
If I may, I just want to give kudos to Cindy Chapman. She's the project manager on this job and she has worked very hard, very diligently to keep everything that we can reused, helping coordinate all the design aspects, working through a lot of the casework and, and stuff. She's been pivotal in this and so just wanted to give a quick shout out to her.
Well, thank you. And thank you, Cindy. Okay, I guess we'll move on to item number 10 and that's items from equalization and I'll recognize Director Shannon Rittberger.
Good morning.
Are we going to read those separately or just one motion?
I talked with Holly about that just before the meeting. I don't think you have to and of course I'm wrong. Holly says you have to, something with the way the law reads and how you have to act on it. Holly says that you have to read e- each of those and she says she's got it to a minimum.
Chairman.
Commissioner Headcut.
Move to approve the Bateman application for tax year 2023 as follows. Heather Shaw, number 542931728. John, number 80024151976. Johnson, number 80105321578. City of Rapid City, number 21084. Number 21085. Number 21806. Number 21807. Number 21021088. Number 21089. 21090. 21091. 21092. And 21093. $21.10 each. City of Rapid City, number 45369300922. Astrid Menrose LLC, number 66224178766. Mondun, number 22529102278. Havenman, number 349243092446. Cool, number 301451786. Diggins, number 20598281550. Ronnie, number 31100129970. Nelson, make sure I'm on the same line. Number 3303129028. Beck, number 3003395326. Great Plains Tribal Leader Health, number 700176073972. Sazinski, number 80102299570. State of South Dakota, 176559980. CCA TTLC733531053740. Mata Diaz, number 10172093038. Kurtreville, number 80082542378. Liburnite, number 4480969792. Hanson, 818054025. Ellsworth Development, number 495501023364. Bradstreet, number 8012268107454. And Witcher, number 626451014313.
Second. Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience before we vote back to the commission? All in favor, reply by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Onto item number 11. I'll recognize Jamie Tonys. Did I pronounce that right? Anyhow, this will be in reference to the grant, raise grant application.
Hi, yeah, Jamie Tonys. Thank you. I'm the grants division manager for the City of Rapid City. And we are writing a planning grant to the DOT for work on Country Road. I'm looking at it from Haynes Avenue to Elkville, doing a corridor study to understand the traffic needs for the future with all of the development happening in that area and safety considerations, as well as looking at how we can add multimodal opportunities. There's no sidewalks. And then doing a design for the phase from 143rd to Haynes. And so of course, part of that is within the city and part of that is within the county.
Okay.
Chairman.
Commissioner Headcut.
Motion to move, uh, to approve a letter of support for Rapid, City of Rapid City for their rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity, raise grant application for improvements along Country Road.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Okay, back to the commission. All in favor, reply by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Items from the highway department, I'll recognize Superintendent Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. In front of you is similar to the letter of support there for the City of Rapid City. The Pennington County is looking at applying for a raise grant for Bombing Range Road going from Highway 44 to the county line, which is the northern part of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. This is a primary corridor for the, the citizens of the reservation to get to and from Rapid. It's one of two routes that they, they usually take. There's, you know, the multiple freight entities that use this route as well. Let me zoom in here so I can see my notes. The ADT on this road is around 1,200 cars a day and that was taken in 2021. Of those, it's 66 trucks per day use this route. The reason we're asking for this raised planning grant is to do the engineering. The road is built on Badlands clay, so it's always constantly moving. And I'm sure some of you have been down 44 or even been on this road. It's like a roller coaster. The, I was looking today, when I looked up the ADT, the average speed is 66 miles an hour and I don't know how those people are doing 66 miles an hour, but.
They're launching.
It's a, it's a very rough piece of road. We do have rough road signs on this, so just we're, we don't have the, the funds to fix this thing properly or, and/or due to the design. So that's why we're requesting the planning grant from the, the federal DOT, so.
Chairman.
Commissioner Headcut.
I agree with Joe. I've been on this road many times and it is, the road actually waves like this. So when you're driving, you're like, whoa, whoa, whoa. You're kind of like feeling like you're bouncing in your, it doesn't matter if you have good shocks or not. And with our native, native neighbors, I think with that ADT and the trucks and the things that are coming from Pennington County, it's huge that we make a difference on that road, because that's a lot of people from the reservation that are coming to Pennington County back and forth. So for me, I agree with the grant and I'm glad we're moving forward. That's been like that for a while, Joe. So thank you for, for looking out for our neighbors as well as ourselves.
Just real quick, if I may, the, the cost of the county, we're, we're putting in a 20% match. The match is not required since it's servicing the, the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation and simply where it's at, it's classified as rural. So there is no match required, but trying to give us a little bit of a competitive edge, we, we put a 20% match on there, which is $300,000, which we can easily accommodate in future years' budgets. The cost for the construction, if we are successful and get the raise grant and the, the planning grant and then get the subsequently, the, the construction grant would be 10 to 15 million dollars is the, the total reconstruction cost of this corridor of the road, so.
Chairman.
Commissioner Headcut.
Motion to move the, move to authorize the highway department to submit a rebuilding America infrastructure with sustainability and equity, raise grant application for the Bombing Range Road Safety Improvement Planning Project.
Second. Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Okay, back to the commission. I would ask, all in favor, reply by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, commission.
Thank you, Joe. Onto Commission Manager Holly Hennes, item 13.
Commissioners, this item is continued from our last board meeting with the request for additional information in regards to travel and mileage. So with that, I will certainly stand for any questions the board may have. I want to thank Joan for helping me to put all this information together. It was a lot as we don't typically track it this way, but certainly stand for any questions the board may have.
Chairman.
Commissioner Headcut.
So on 77-3, that's where I was confused. Travis was trying to reiterate to me again. And 77-5, so I looked and, which was weird, I was looking at the website again, or I mean, Travis had looked at the personnel for Minnehaha. They actually took salary and they took it from 77-5. So trying to figure out method of payment, whether per diem or salary, and the amount per diem or salary shall be determined by the Board of Commissioners in each county. And it says if the per diem method is used, the county commissioner shall be allowed per diem amount for each day they are actually necessary to apply to duties and business related to county affairs. So I took it as that if you're going to take per diem, it was 77-3. And if you wanted salary, the Board of County Commissioners was 775. The Board of County Commissioners may determine the salary of the commissioners. Such salary may be set by the Board of County Commissioners at its first regular meeting each year. Then it says that the Board of County Commissioner fails to determine a salary. So I was trying to figure out, and I thought I had it figured out, that we'd just taken salary and I was wrong on 77-3 until I looked at the salary and they were taking salary on Minnehaha's salary for commissioners on 77-5. So now I'm confused. Per diem wise, the travel expenses, I wasn't worried more about the mileage, it was the travel and that the commission always had limited us to a certain amount back in the past of how much we could spend. If you didn't spend that, like Travis didn't go and Deb didn't go, then the other commissioners could use that. So do we have a travel budget right now, Holly?
Yes, the board sets when we do budgets.
Okay, and what is that travel budget now?
Um, I apologize, I did not bring the specific, but I do budget based on each conference that is available. And in the past, it's been my position and then the other two commissioners, if they so choose, depending on what conference it is. But then we also have to budget for spending authority for others that may be on national boards that we get reimbursed for. So for me to be able to give you a specific dollar amount, I'm unable to, I don't have that in front of me.
So, and I didn't know either that we got reimbursed for others. I just thought we just sent that bill to them. So then you have to for basically Naco for Lloyd or Western, I don't know, WID or something. And then Gary for the South Dakota counties, we get reimbursed from them, but we have to pay for it out of our pocket first and then they.
Correct.
We send them, okay, now understand. So it'd be hard to kind of set a budget to a certain extent, depending on how much travel they do. And they, as of this year, they've joined two other committees that on travel is going to be a huge difference for reimbursement.
Correct.
Okay.
And we do have commissioners who choose to pay for part of their attendance at some of these conferences out of their own pocket. So that is also what this chart shows, is where they attended and if they paid for a part of it out of their own funds or had alternate arrangements that wouldn't have cost the taxpayers any money.
Okay, I know on mine, I canceled, but my husband had some medical issues that week and I thought Joan had said the only thing was the flight at that time, that I got a voucher. Other than that, she got it canceled, but it doesn't look like on the mount that that was canceled just through the flight, meaning I don't know if I still have a voucher out there that I can use to go to a different conference this year. Joan's shaking her head yes, and that, the rest of that was reimbursed.
No, in that specific instance, we lost the cost of the entire registration for the conference. We lost one night of the hotel. And then yes, you are correct that the airfare is in a credit in your name only. So you, we will, if you choose to utilize the airfare, you could attend another conference, but.
For this year.
We lost the cost of the registration and one night of the hotel. That was just.
Okay.
Couldn't get it back. Couldn't get it back.
And at that point, I, when I have emergency, I can't help what happens to my family, so um, yeah, it was with my husband. So um, other than that, I don't know how we would set, like I said, my, my issue mostly, if we set per diem, are we setting it to state? Are we setting it to um federal and mileages through state, if I'm correct?
Correct.
So can you, can anybody ask or tell me, and maybe I'm wrong, why would you say seven-seven dash four, but we don't have to vote on it for mileage? Right? Why would they even put that on there just to know that we get mileage no matter what, I thought? And travel expenses, just like the employees do?
Yeah, seven-seven dash four says county commissioners shall be paid traveling expenses for each mile traveled in the discharge of their duties.
So, and then so when we do the seven, seven dash three, did you see a difference in seven-seven dash three or seven-seven dash five, Holly?
Yes. Yes, there is a difference. Seven-seven-three says that the Board of Commissioners can choose the method of payment, whether it's per diem or whether it's salary. Not one, not each, it is one or the other. If the board chooses to go the salary route, then you jump down to seven-seven-five. They're not together, they're in addition. So if the board fails to agree to set on a salary amount, then it, the statute very clearly lays out what the salary amount will be based on the population of your county.
Okay.
And that's only if the commission fails to determine a salary amount.
So now I got that. So you drop down to seven-seven dash five once you decide.
That you want to choose to do the salary.
Okay, so we.
Per diem means by the day. So if the board chooses to do a per diem rate by the day, this is where I went in and made the calendar that could show what it would look like if you chose per diem per day of when you actually did commission work.
Okay, the main confusion wasn't that, it was seven-seven dash three or seven-seven dash five on salary. So the per diem, I didn't want per diem rate per day, I'll just tell you, me personally, I wanted salary. The mileage, didn't have a problem with mileage, was looking at travel and what we were spending on travel. But you need to take in consideration this year that trying to set a budget for travel, it's going to be hard because we get paid back for some of that, um, for you, um, not knowing how much that would cost. So when we first did this, we, we made a motion, three made a motion for seven-seven dash three, two made a motion for seven-seven dash five, and that's why I brought it back, is we go from seven-seven dash three to seven-seven dash five. Because we have to drop down, right? Because we're taking salary.
I don't believe anybody made a motion to do per diem. I think the board voted for the salary, the flat rate salary amount.
Right, so didn't you just say we have to go from seven-seven dash three on the salary and then set it on seven-seven dash five?
Yeah, which seven-seven-five, so you went and made a motion for seven-seven-three, which is to go by the salary route. So then the board jumped down and utilized seven-seven-five, which says the Board of County Commissioners may determine the salary of the commissioners. And that's what you set it at the whatever twenty-twenty-four's rate of um eleven-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars, I think, bi-weekly is what the board is this year.
Okay, so my point was that three said seven-seven dash three and two said seven-seven dash five. When we made the motion to, I made a substitute for seven-seven dash five, remember with no travel. So at that point, um, we don't have to say we're going to seven-seven dash five. What is the motion then, Holly, if we're taking salary plus mileage and then the travel?
The motion is correct as the board voted on it the first meeting of January and setting their annual salary at the rate.
On seven-seven dash three?
On seven-seven-five. You're utilizing both of them together in that instance.
Okay, when I read the motion, it was, if you look at the motion that was on January, I read the motion and it said seven-seven dash three was a three-to-two vote, seven-seven dash five was a um amendment or not amendment, a substitute, and that failed with three-to-two. So that's why I'm saying that.
Without looking at the motions, I apologize, Commissioner, I, I'm not recalling exactly how it was laid out.
Okay, so at this, that's why I was explaining to you the difference. So what is the motion today, then?
There is no motion needed today. The board is currently being paid by salary. On seven-seven dash three, correct, not seven-seven dash five. I guess I'm.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I try to explain just a little bit? They kind of work hand in hand. However, if we, if we um take per diem, seven-seven-five doesn't matter at all. If we, if we would have chose a per diem rate, um, a hundred dollars per day as the outline, seven-seven-five would have no application at all. But because the motion was made for salary, which is what seven-seven-three says, that second piece of that is falling into seven-seven-five is we get to set the salary. If we fail to set the salary, then there's a salary that's set by state statute. So it's not that you, we made a motion on seven-seven-three and then seven-seven-five, it's just all kind of, it's meshed together, but this is kind of like the format. If you fail to do this, then this is what happens, or if you go this route, this is what happens. It's, it's, I don't know the best term, except that it's kind of melded together depending on which route you go.
I'm just saying, if you pull up the minutes, it's seven-seven dash three is what, three of them voted and me and you voted no on a three-to-two vote on seven-seven dash three, and then on the seven-seven dash five, we voted to try to um do a different motion and that failed with using seven-seven dash five, so. I'm still confused and I can't understand, I guess. Is it?
We're, we're already set for salary, Mr. Chair. We're already set for salary, that's what we voted on. I, I don't, I don't see us having to have another vote because we're already set to vote, uh, we're already set. We, we made that determination that day as a salary.
Three of them did.
Well, yeah, essentially.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, and then the substitute motion was moved by Hidcock in sec- to approve the twenty-twenty-four salary for the Pennington County Board of Commissioners at one thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty cents bi-weekly and to eliminate the per diem per S D C L seven dash seven dash three. The vote failed due to a lack of a second. And in our world, per diem is only meals.
Travel.
And you, you wanted to eliminate that, which the board already doesn't request to be reimbursed for per diem, which is meals.
Meals and travel, actually.
Ms. Hidcock, I just believe that you're confusing the term per diem in how the statute lays it out, how as versus how Pennington County um administers meals being per diem.
Okay, I got the meals because we don't do meals, Ms. Holly.
Correct.
What I was looking at was having salary plus travel plus mileage, where some counties don't take mileage, um, as Lincoln County did, and then salary they took, but they also raised their salary. Um, some take travel and not, um, and still have salary and mileage. My point was salary and mileage at that time, but setting a budget for travel at this point and get reimbursed, I don't know how you do that, and maybe I need to look at further on that, but um, I think our travel was high. Um, was my point, so salary and mileage, I didn't have an issue with. If that includes seven-seven dash three, then I'm in agreement.
Uh, Holly, I'm looking at South Dakota Code of Federal Law seven dash seven dash four mileage allowance for the county. That, that uh provides the reimbursement for county business for travel.
Correct.
Um, my question is if a commissioner does not want that, there is a form that you can fill out and waive that.
Correct. If a commissioner does not want to be reimbursed for their mileage, they can do that as well. That is correct.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So I'm not sure I understand everything that we've gone through here the last few meetings in regard to travel and reimbursement for mileage and et cetera. Uh, I guess I was under the impression that there was a effort to try to stop uh commissioners from collecting on mileage. Uh, maybe I was wrong on that. Uh, but I see from the information that was provided, and I think Commissioner Hidcock had said that she felt that we were uh charging the taxpayers too much relative to our salary, our, and our expenses. Um, but as I look at that, you know, for the years that have been provided, it doesn't appear to me that there's uh anything out of line. And if there's uh anyone that's charging taxpayers more, it's Commissioner Hidcock because she's having the county pay for um her health insurance, probably for her and her husband, uh, and that amounts now to over ten thousand dollars a year. So I, I think as you look at it overall, uh, the least cost was spent on the other four commissioners for salary, mileage, travel. Uh, uh, but then Commissioner Hidcock has got the health coverage in on hers and that takes her up above, up above anybody else, so.
Chairman.
Not sure if this was a, a idea of publishing this information, I, I don't know where it goes from here.
Commissioner Hidcock.
So I don't mind if it's published, but I also pay into that healthcare. Um, do we pay into our travel and our per diem? Drews, you have ten thousand. Um, Hidcock has four. McCrory has fourteen thousand. Uh, Lassiter has five, so Roskeneck has fifteen.
I believe that's.
A year going to compare a healthcare that I pay in about seven thousand, which is about, what, two thousand something to the taxpayers, to take a travel in per diem and mileage, which I do not take.
Mr. Chair.
Um, unfortunately, um, I don't think that's a comparable because you have two retired commissioners here. Other than that, if you see DeSanto, same thing, um, that's an option. So to say that you, um, I pay into a healthcare trust is the same as travel and, and mileage? I don't think it's a comparable.
Commissioner Drews.
Chair. So um, what you were doing is taking five years worth of travel there uh to come up with the ten thousand. So if you take the five years of the health benefits, you're coming up with uh um fifty thousand dollars compared. Uh, yeah, I, I do pay part of the cost of uh the travel expenses. Uh, getting fifty-one cents a mile is not uh fully paid for what you use your vehicle for and so forth. Uh, I, I received exact amounts, I believe, for travel when I went to the conventions. Uh, I didn't make any money relative to those.
Right.
Uh, so, yeah, they are, it, it is comparable.
So if that's the truth, then we give employees benefits, all kinds of benefits on taxpayer dollars. But do we give them travel expenses and mileage and do they have the same amount as these commissioners have been using? Um, I don't think it's the same. We pay in seven thousand a year, it's not free. That benefit is not free. I also don't charge mileage and everything to taxpayers. A lot of the different areas, they actually include it in on their salaries. They think they're paid enough.
Okay, item thirteen was.
So I disagree.
Was for discussion only, and we've had the discussion. Let's move on to item fourteen.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chair, I want to make sure everybody understands, those numbers that are included in that benefits section, Commissioner Hidcock, that is the amount that the taxpayers are paying. That is not inclusive of your contribution. So yes, the ten thousand was a benefit provided to you by the taxpayers in addition to the seven thousand that you pay on top of that.
So I paid seven and it doesn't matter if I paid seven or employees pay on their um premiums, it's still taxpayer dollars.
The same amount. Commissioners are treated the same as employees. Employees get travel expenses as well if they have conferences or something required education that they have, but the net is not the two thousand that you were saying.
So you're telling me that travel and per diem and mileage is different than getting um taxpayer dollars for healthcare? Something that um we should also take in consideration on salaries? Because if it's ten thousand on mine, I'd like to see on people that have other salaries in Pennington County, I think we should start looking at um all the benefits they get and how much they're really making on each person in Pennington County. Because when we're doing our wage studies, we forget this. And I already know why that was brought up.
Okay.
We do that during the, the budget hearings, yes, we do do that.
Oh, we don't separate it per person. We don't spend, we, we tell per department.
I want to move on to item fourteen.
I disagree, but I thank you for uh pointing that out for me.
Uh, Gary, Drews, item fourteen, update on uh two thousand four, twenty-four legislative session.
So we're, we're winding down, we've got three weeks of session left, uh, plus veto day. Uh, I had provided everybody with a uh update on legislation that uh mostly, most of the legislation directly impacts the county. And uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions in regard to those. Uh, there are a number of bills that uh are up for a committee hearing today that do impact uh the county. I think one of those bills is uh that Senate Bill one thirty-four, uh, which is uh for the healthy forest. So that's before committee today. So happy to answer any questions. I think uh overall, I think that uh uh counties have done fairly well. Uh, at the same time, there's a lot more we'd like to see done. So I think in future years, uh, the counties need to be work, need to work very hard in order to uh derive additional benefits for the counties.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lassiter.
Um, I was out of town, um, visiting sick family, but I, there's two that I haven't really had a chance to follow up on. Uh, are you familiar where the status of the V H R bill is? And how about the one that was dealing with setbacks for um counties where they're, and I don't remember the wording of it and I don't remember what the bill number is, does that ring a bell?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
The V H R bill was killed in committee, and what's the other one?
Uh, dealing with counties not being able to do setbacks for pipelines and stuff. The one that P U C I think is involved with that one a little bit.
Okay, and that, there's several bills uh regarding the pipelines. Uh, none of those have received formal adoption in either body at this point in time.
Okay.
Some of those are also up for committee uh discussion today and further discussions this week on, on the rest of them. So the end of this week, we probably have a little bit better idea as to where the proposed pipeline bills are going to be going.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lassiter.
Is that something that we should as a body give input on, whether a resolution or something of that nature of how it's going to impact us? Or is it too early to tell even with the way it's currently drafted? Because I haven't been able to follow those. I just, I'm getting phone calls about, you know, the county should be protecting the citizens, so I just want to understand.
I think, I think the key to that is, is that we continue to uh work toward local control.
Yes.
On all pieces of legislation. Uh, and that's what we do on the pipeline bills also.
Okay.
And uh, as far as uh for different counties, there may be a different impact for some of those pipelines, uh, where they're directly going through. We don't have one actually proposed at this point in time of coming through Pennington County, but I think the main thing is to try to maintain your local control for.
Okay.
Eminent domain is another issue that's up relative to that. Obviously, there's uh times when both municipalities and counties uh would like to exercise eminent domain for right of ways, et cetera. Uh, so we're also trying to be protective of that. Um, but at the same time, um, uh, some of those bills get pretty onerous as far as the language is concerned, so it's a matter of trying to protect, I think, our, our interest in those types of pieces of legislation.
Okay, thank you.
So Gary, my question would be, all the proposed uh bills that went through the summer studies, how many of those or what percent actually made it to the floor?
Well, I think there's probably uh several of those, uh, Mr. Chair, that are still in committee action, but most of them are in appropriations at this point in time. Uh, appropriations did receive their um new projections last week, uh, of how much money may be available.
money may be available, and that increased by about $41 million. So now appropriations, uh, can go to work on trying to determine which bills they've had in committee, committees, uh, that may come out of there with some dollar amount attached. And, uh, just because they went in requesting a certain amount doesn't mean that they, uh, if they come out, that they'll have that same dollar amount attached to them. I, I think the main one that's, uh, working through the system that, uh, looks very positive at this point in time is the one that would create a commission on indigent, uh, legal defense. And, uh, that's received, uh, it has, um, let's see, I gotta think now. I think one of the, one of those bills has passed through the House and is, but is back in, back at appropriations and will need the other body to, to act on that. There are actually two bills moving forward that would, uh, kind of provide the same thing. Funding mechanism for the two of them is a little bit different, but I would say that's a, that's a strong possibility that, uh, and that would be, that commission would then handle appeals, uh, for the indigent legal defense.
Thank you for the update. Is there any, uh, comments from the audience relative to the update that Gary just presented? If not, I would, uh, move on to item 15, which is items from the chair, commission members. And I'll just, this is a time for individual members to bring forth ideas and concerns to the full board. Official action will not be taken on any item brought forth at this time. Direction may be given to bring them back before the board for future consideration. I'll, uh, start off with Travis.
No committees. I was out of town.
Okay. Mr. Drews.
Committee meetings, is that what you're looking for at this point or are you looking for?
Excuse me, just, uh.
Okay.
Committee reports. Item 16.
Okay, so, uh, I was not able to attend the MPO executive policy meeting, uh, Transportation Committee. Uh, Commissioner McCrory did, I talked briefly to him. Uh, there was a couple of those things that, uh, we actually dealt with today in, in commission relative to the, uh, raise grant letter and also the, uh, there's also, they approved the, uh, Highway 1416 and Radar Hill Corridor Study. And, uh, there is a draft report that I will leave, uh, anybody can take a look at that if they would like. Uh, I think the key to this, uh, report was that, uh, if I get to the back page here, uh, Highway 1416, uh, some of the recommendations do include, uh, if you recall right now, we have a lot of four-way stops on Highway 1416. Uh, this would create some, uh, hybrid roundabouts and, uh, you know, to eliminate those all-way, uh, almost, uh, all four-stop, uh, ways. And so there's, uh, the report is, is fairly thick. It goes through a lot of detail as far as, uh, that corridor study. And, uh, I, this was something that needed to be done in order to move forward with anything further. So the study will be utilized in trying to move forward with the grants for that.
Okay. I guess I could, uh, some of the items that I'm going to read off probably belong to under item 15, items from the chair, but, uh, I'll go ahead and present them as I put them together here. On the 7th of February, I attended the John Vicarbitz Foundation Poverty Escape Room, presented at the Journey Museum. This is where teams break in to, uh, uh, or the table would break into the team to navigate the daily lives of those living in poverty. Each team was presented with some fundamental tools and a timeframe to use them in an attempt to get the kids to school, run the wick, shop for groceries and diapers, go to pawn shop, purchase gas, reach trip, pick up the kids from school and be home by 3:00 PM to meet the social services. And there's probably six or seven teams and, uh, one team made it that, uh, kind of gave the folks that attended that an insight, uh, what it's like to be those in poverty. And then on that same day, I met with, uh, Will Cohen, he's here in the audience, and we met with, uh, D O E to discuss his current concerns with the ag status of his 61 acres located off the Gillette Prairie Road. Uh, Will plans on going in front of the commission for an appeal. I see him, as I mentioned, he's in the audience. On that same day, I met Joe Miller and I met with the Highway Department and South Dakota DOT to discuss the Hill City Yard in contract with the state. Should the county enter into a long-term agreement with the Forest Service for a future site off the Deerfield Road. On the 15th, I attended the elevate trip to peer to attend committee meetings and various bills under consideration. Uh, we had a photo shoot with the governor and lunch with the legislators and lobbyists. On the 16th, uh, at the Hill City Economic Development Meeting, uh, Jim Gubas, the District Ranger for the Mystic District, District, uh, presented the Mitchell Lake Project, which is, uh, Mitchell Lake is located between Hill City and Three Forks. And on the table would be to, uh, remove the dam, uh, repair the dam or just leave as is. And, uh, Jim will be here, I think, the next meeting to the, give that presentation to the commission. Uh, Building Committee, you've pretty much seen what we did the day. We just discussed different, uh, finishes, interior and exterior and, uh, an update on the progress of, uh, 900 concourse and 14 St. Joe. Commissioner Hadcock.
Sure. Planning Commission, you're going to see the stuff we talked about on Planning Commission today. Had some really good conversation and made some exceptions, I thought that were pretty good for out on, uh, 44 for one of the, uh, fire, um, prevention stuff on one of the buildings. Also went to the lapel pinning for the veteran, Vietnam veterans to thank them for their service. I had a lot of the veterans that we see at the VFW, Joe, John and Ken that were there. It was exciting to see him get pinned and they were pretty happy. Um, Joe actually said he had like five of those pins and he did give them to one of the Vietnam veterans that he knew that, um, didn't have one. I just talked to him the other day. So Governor Rounds, thank you for doing that for Vietnam veterans. I also believe that they weren't thanked for their service back when they were serving enough from our nation. So, uh, again, I thank them for their service. Um, they did our country and defended our country, the men and women. Um, so I appreciated their service and what they've done for us. So I was happy that, uh, not only we could represent, um, from the county, I did see some of our county, uh, department heads there as well, but, uh, Governor Rounds thanked him and I thought that was just pretty awesome. So there was over 200, uh, veterans that were there, uh, that he, uh, recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner Hadcock.
Uh, on the item 17, approval of the vouchers for $2,164,180.13.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion, second. Comments from the audience, back to the commission, all in favor, is the eye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 18. Items in the public pursuit of South Dakota Code of Law, 1-25-1 speaker request form is required, which I just got turned in. A time for the members of the public to discuss and express concerns of the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting county government and its function. Action will not be taken during this time on any issues brought forth that are not properly noticed. Speakers under this item will be recorded in the minutes by name and area of interest. I will call, uh, Benjamin Sherman.
Mr. Chair, I don't see him in the audience any longer.
Okay. And then, uh, I will call Will Cohen. Good morning.
Good morning. So as Commissioner Ross Connect said, we met with equalization on the 7th and it's about my ag status, but a bigger issue came up in that meeting. I brought up, um.
Are you, are, will you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Will Cowan. I live up on Gillette Prairie.
Okay.
And I sent all of you an email on the 12th, although there was an attachment, I don't know if you opened them because it can be viruses. But speaking with, so we had a meeting, Ron, myself, Commissioner Ross Connect, the Director of Equalization and Shannon Champion, Ms. Champion, the ag assessor. We'd been emailing back and forth since the 12th and I kept bringing up definitions of terms and it's in chapter 10 dash 6, which is annual assessment of property. And section 101, um, says definition of terms, term used in this chapter mean, and it says Department, Department of Revenue, Director, County, County's Director of Equalization. Then number three, trapped, lat, piece and parcel, any contiguous quantity of land that is possessed by, owned by, or recorded in the name of the same person. I think that's pretty simple. And then for the actual classification, it's in 10 dash 6 dash 112. And when it mentions parcel, I believe you have to go back to the definition in 10 dash 6, 101. The Director and Ms. Champion said, no, that was a different section. Well, it says it applies to the chapter. So I have two, um, what they called tax parcels and they wanted to use their definition. One of them's 35 acres, the other's 26, so I have 61. So I have one parcel of 61 by the definition of terms in chapter 10 dash 6. It applies to the whole chapter. They deny that. Then they had mentioned to Commissioner Ross Connect, another way I could have one parcel. And I brought that up at the end of the meeting. They didn't bring it up at all to me. And at that point, the Director said, oh yeah, you don't have time now, but you can get a plat. So I showed him the plat of my property from 1986, 61 acres. They said they'd have to look into it. The next day I got an email saying, yes, I have 61 acres now. If I hadn't had that plat, it probably cost me in fees, about $500, I think, to the county plus, um, probably getting it surveyed. By the definition, I already had 61 acres. I think it's, how many other landowners are getting treated the same way where the Department of Equalization is not applying the law? They said that definition doesn't apply because it's in a different section. They flat out said that. I think it needs to be looked into. There's something wrong that we're getting treated this way, that they're not listening, reading the law correctly. And I did reach out to the State's Attorney's Office and I was told to contact the Director of Equalization. And then I, I could appeal. I might make ag. I mean, they finally admitted I have one parcel because it's platted. I don't need the plat by the definition. And on the 12th of February, Ms. Champion did reach out to the gentleman I have a lease agreement with for hay. He puts up the hay, I get some, he gets some profit. You have to show profit. That shows it. So I think you need to look at what their understanding of the law is.
Mr. Chair.
You know.
I just have a clarifying question. Are those two, when they were originally talking to you about it, are they two parcels that are contiguous?
They are contiguous and you know the law. Yes, and they said, they had, the only preparation they did is, you know, I would think if a commissioner wants to meet with them, they might've looked into maybe my name, a plat of the property. And I, I offered to give them a letter that I sent to the Department of Equalization in 2004 on my ag application at the time that mentioned the, the plat. At one point, a plat, you couldn't be ag years ago. And now you can as long as it's not a subdivision. I don't know why it was platted in 86. Ms. Champion's email thanked me for the new information I gave them, 1986 plat, not really new. They didn't find the one in 04. By the time I got their email, Rapid Map already had me in one plat and it was the plat from 06, 02, 04. So she missed that one when they researched or looked into it. So.
Mr. Chair. So, uh, Commissioner Drews. So, Mr. Cowan, I did receive your letter last week and I know it referenced an earlier letter that went to all the commission. I did not receive that.
I think that was my mistake on looking up the emails. I thought there was one that went to everybody PB and apparently that might only go to Commissioner Ross Connect. I thought it was the Board of Commissioners. So my fault.
No, no, that's, that's fine.
So.
Uh, I ju, I just wanted you to know that.
Well, I.
I don't think we've been setting on.
Right, right.
At all. But, uh, the, the, the point, I mean, your email is.
Long.
Very, but, uh, the, the point was, is that it had been changed, I believe, was what originally brought this about. Is that not correct? It had been changed from ag?
I've been ag, so I got out of the Marine Corps in 93. I bought the first, first 35 acres in 94. And then in 03, I bought the other 26, which completed the tract and, and all my, um, it always said part of tract one. So the people sold the other 26 in 03 and, but I've been ag. Maybe one year I wasn't because I filled out the paperwork wrong after I bought the second part.
Okay.
But other than that, I've been ag the whole time. I had cow, I leased to a former commissioner. Um, he puts cows on my property.
Okay.
Mr. Drews.
Thank you.
When I went, uh, and met with Shannon and Will and Shannon, uh, as an appraiser and I looked at his legal description, it's tract one. It's just one parcel. However, there's a section line that severs it and I don't see how they could ever sold it in the first place, uh, a part of a tract. I mean, I just, uh, other than the fact that they were saying that one's in, one part of the track was in this section, another in another section. But I totally agree, it's one parcel. It's, it's not two contiguous parcels.
But even without the plat, by the definition in the law.
161 acre parcel.
So, and it got worked out for me because of the plat, but that doesn't help anyone else that falls into this category. It says contiguous land for the parcel. And I thought, well, maybe they don't understand what that means, but they just, we don't have to use that definition. It's in a different, I said it's the same law. I, I did have to go home and see what the chapter was and that is 10 dash 6.
Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Hadcock.
Sir, I agree with contiguous with, um, that is the law and that they should have probably noticed it. Um, I appreciate you coming forward and talking about it with us. Um, you took the time out to, uh, make that difference, which I appreciate, sir. And, uh, I did look at the email and it sounds like you got it worked out in the bottom line, but the main thing is what you're trying to tell us is look and make sure that everybody else, um, that might have some kind of issue with contiguous or how it's done, if they have the plat and everything, uh, for proof, sometimes we don't have that, then, um, we need to do something different to make sure that difference is made. So, um, your point is, is well taken today and, um, I appreciate you coming, just like I said, to take the time to say, look at this stuff, um, look at what this is, what's happening with my property, make sure it's not happening with somebody else's.
Exactly. A lot of people don't have the time to do this.
Thank you.
So I think the takeaway from this is that Will, when he gets his assessment notice, it's going to indicate that he's non-ag.
It might be ag because.
Okay.
Ms. Champion finally reached out to the retired sergeant major that I've got the lease agreement for hay and she, I don't know exactly what was said, but he did say he sells all of it and our lease agreement says his payment to me, like most shares, you know, he pays me by giving me some of the hay.
I'm just saying that it becomes non-ag.
I will be back.
Be back.
If it comes back non-ag.
Well, thank you so much for.
Thank you, Will.
Thanks for listening and, and hopefully you can get the point of the law across. Thank you.
We got it.
Thank you.
You did good. Thank you.
Uh, I take a motion for a 10-minute break before that, uh, planning is only set up.
So move.
Take it.
I got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
I make a motion that we go into. I'd make a motion that we go into Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item, uh, item A.
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item A is variance VA 23 dash 17. It reduces the setback to these property line for an existing structure. Uh, the applicant landowner is Keith Hague. Location is 13640 South Highway 16. Uh, existing land uses commercial, current zoning is Highway Service District. Um, access is off South Highway 16, and there's no special flood hazard area. Uh, when looking at variances, we take a two-pronged approach for problem number one, whether granting a variance turns counter to public interest. Uh, as you can see, the answers are on the screen. Uh, it doesn't appear that it's in public interest to grant a variance. And problem number two, whether a special condition exists to grant variance, uh, there is no special condition that exists. Uh, currently on the property, there are several 50 by 125 storage sheds and 150 by 100 storage shed. Uh, there is a couple violations on the property, uh, ones for a storage building without a building permit that doesn't meet setbacks. Uh, this variance will allow the building permit to, uh, proceed and clear the violation. And then there are four Conex containers without building permits that also don't meet setbacks. A letter was mailed to the applicant on September 3rd, uh, on September 20th, 2023, uh, in regards to that, uh, variance or in regards to that violation. Uh, the applicant constructed a 50 by 125 storage shed without an approved building permit. Now, the existing storage shed does not meet the required 30-foot or 10-foot setback for a Highway Service District. Uh, staff recommends denial of this request, there's no special condition exists on the property. Uh, the request would not be necessary, have the applicant obtained an approved building permit prior to constructing the storage shed. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending denial of variance VA 23 dash 17, as no special condition exists. Uh, however, if the Board of, uh, Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff would include two conditions.
Chairman.
Commissioner Headcut.
Would you pull up the Rapid Map, Cody? So he's got two other storage areas on that property. Does he have variances on those because those are right on the line?
No, those, um, appear to meet the required setback to this 10-foot. Um, this one, when he came in, as you can see, based on the survey, it's kind of hard to see that, I guess. This is 8.7, and this one's 11.
So those are, say again.
So those, those currently meet the required setback or appear to meet the required setback based off of this survey.
Okay.
Uh, but this one's 8.7 feet, and there's a 10-foot setback.
So I thought there was no setback. I didn't know it was 8.7 out of 1.3 difference. And he already has two setting, you said they, they're not on the line, they're actually have the setback on them?
Uh, based off of the survey, correct.
Did he move the storage units that were in the back?
Um, not that I've been aware of. I know we met with the applicant's representative, and I believe he's here, um, about moving those, and I believe he said that they would work on that, and he can speak to that more than I would be able to.
Okay, so a couple of things. I went up there a couple times, um, talked to the neighbors, went and looked at the property. Um, the neighbors had called me, um, to come look, so I did. Followed through with Jason, came with me, Jason, um, from Planning Department. And the neighbors, the, the storage bins were close enough to their property that it was causing some issues for them, so that's why I asked if they moved the storage bins. Number two, I also went up there because there was no permit for this property or this storage unit or this building. And also told the staff, it takes too long to go through the process, I'm going to build it and take the fines. So, um, to me, I usually, you know, it's 8.7, wasn't a big deal, but to disrespect, um, the Planning Department and say one thing, just because it might simplify the process and make it faster, that you could put it up, um, I think it was pretty disrespectful of the, the applicant. And then come back now and ask for a variance because he did it wrong. Um, for me, and I already talked to, um, Mr. Hague, usually I'm pretty good about variances and, and things that we do, but, um, in this case, I have a kind of a issue with someone telling staff one thing and saying, okay, I'm going to do it anyway, and then you can find me or do what you got to do because I don't want to go through the process, because he did get two d, building permits on his other buildings, so he knew he needed one.
So Cody, how did this come to our attention, this violation?
So, uh, the violation was actually on the four Conex containers that are, they're located up on the northern portion of the property. This came about because he came in to apply for a building permit for it, and our building inspector at the time, um, noticed that the structure didn't meet the required setback.
And so per zone, uh, per zoning requirements, it's supposed to be 10 feet?
10, 10 feet from, um, non-residential zoning, 30 feet from residential zoning. Um, he meets neither one of those requirements.
So if I look at the zoning map, the, the property to the east is zone general commercial?
Uh, yeah, so this, this property right here is Highway Service District. The corner, the corner of the lot line is suburban residential.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Can I get some more clarification on what you were talking about there, Cody, about you said, um, he decided just to go ahead and build it? I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that, the, the series of events of what happened.
Um, so from my, my understanding of it, he, um, started building the concrete pad. He's had the, the kit or the structure on site for a while. Uh, it was, he was waiting for a contractor, uh, to come in and build it. Uh, the contractor called him and said he could, they could come in earlier than what he was expecting. Um, and so he told him to go ahead and build it. He didn't contact our office or anything about the building permit. Um, we do try, it does usually take seven to 10 days, but if there's circumstances and we're able to, we try to approve those permits a little, um, a little faster. Uh, but he never came in for the, the building permit once his contractors called and stated that he could come out and build the structure.
Mr. Chair, follow up?
Uh, go ahead, Travis.
Did he, did he, uh, come in initially before even doing the pad to find out any things, or he just put the pad in without even coming to y'all at all?
Not that I'm aware of. My, my understanding was that he talked to a previous employee in the office back in like 2018, 2019, um, about development on that property. Um, and that was the last time that I'm aware that he had any communications with our office on, on anything, uh, for being built out there.
Okay. Thank you.
So Cody, the other two buildings to the west, are they, do they comply?
So the, it, it appears that it complies to this setback. I am not 100% sure about the setback to residential. Uh, however, the, the building permit was granted back by a, a previous director. Um, so we're, I, I'm not sure what we, what we would do with it, um, since it was approved by our, by our office.
So my question would be, if this variance didn't get approved, the alternative would be to take part of the building down or?
If, yeah, if the variance wasn't approved, you'd have to maintain that 30-foot setback. And my guess would be too, that if the structure really on the other side doesn't meet the required setback to that, that lot line, um, to that 30 feet, it would require a, another variance as well for that structure. Um, but.
We agree that this building isn't adjacent to a, a residential property, it's adjacent to another property that's zone Highway Service.
So it actually, so how, how it would go is, there's this corner lot line, right here is 30 feet. You'd have to be 30 feet from any, any side of this, this line. So if you, if, even if you drew from way up here on this corner right here down here, you'd still have to maintain that 30 feet. So, yeah, he, I would agree that he is more adjacent to the, um, Highway Service zoning district, but he's still technically adjacent to the residential zoning district as well.
I just want to make the applicant aware that we're miss, missing the commissioner today so that, uh, for a variance, you're going to need four out of the five. So just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Hague, what, what Ron's trying to tell you, if one says no today, um, it fails. So if Commissioner Ross, or Commissioner LaCroy comes, one could fail with five here and still pass. So you might want to continue it in case someone says no today.
I appreciate that procedural no, because I, I've still got to present the Paul Harvey, rest of the story aspect of things, so.
Okay. So would you like to continue it till the next meeting, sir?
Uh, yes. What date is that?
March 5th.
March 5th. Yeah, that, that should be great, if you don't mind.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
I got a motion in a second to, uh, continue till March 7th, 2024. All in favor, reply by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We'll see you March 7th.
Fifth, right?
Fifth.
March 5th, all right?
March 5th, sir.
March 6?
Fifth.
Yes.
Fifth. Okay, make a note of that, March 5th and not 7th.
Bye.
Uh, item B, and I believe that item B will be, uh, they've asked for continuance on that.
Uh, correct. Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Uh, the applicant is requesting to continue to the March 5th Board of Commissioners meeting.
So moved.
I got a motion in a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. On item C.
Was there a C?
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. Item C is Tax Increment Finance District Number 5. It's amendment, and the amendment is to amend the existing, um.
Hold on. Mr. Chair, you need a motion to come out of Board of Adjustment, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we, uh, come out of the executive session to regular session.
Board of Adjustment.
Or to, uh.
Board of Adjust.
Board of Adjustment to regular session.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in a second to come on the Board of Adjustment. Uh, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion approved.
Item C is, uh, Tax Increment Finance District Number 5. It's an amendment to revise the existing TIF Number 5 for Liberty Plaza. Um, the reason for this amendment is revised assignment agreement. Um, this was reviewed by our State's Attorney's Office, and, um, Mr. Tobin Morris is on Zoom if you have any questions. It's basically to reassign to a different bank.
Okay. I believe Toby, Toby Morris is on Zoom. Uh, Toby wants to say anything? There, Toby? Uh, Commissioner Headcut.
It's just moving to a different funding source is what it looks like, if I'm correct. Um, I'm going to move approval.
Okay.
Target.
I got a motion in a second. Any comments from the audience? Back to the commission. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item D, I believe, is, uh, basically the same property.
Correct. It's Tax Increment Finance District Number 6. It's an amendment to amend the existing TIF District Number 6 for Apple Valley, Meadow Valley Affordable Housing Development. It is a revised assignment agreement. Uh, the State's Attorney's Office has reviewed. Um, it is also just an assignment to a new bank. And Mr. Morris is on Zoom if there's questions.
Chairman.
Mr. Chair, make the motion to approve.
Whoops. Sorry.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. Any comments from the audience? Back to the commission.
All right.
All in favor, indicate.
Hold on. I have a question.
Commissioner Headcut.
You're ready to go, Ron. That's okay. So, um, is Toby on there?
Yes, he is.
Hi, Commissioner.
I didn't see you. Up there.
Radio.
So question, Toby. The codified law for the grant not to exceed 12 million, 413, 620, are they still, um, taking that amount?
Are you referring to the Liberty?
Nope, number six.
Apple Valley.
Apple Valley.
Oh, uh, yes, that will be the amount, uh, per the TIF. Even though costs have risen, we've been able to get some offset with South Dakota housing to make that project viable.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask you, is that you had 5 million from the state, and I didn't know at one time, I know Mr. Skull came to me and said that he would like to lower it to 8 million, but I didn't know at this point, is he still taking the 12 plus the 5 from the state in order to do this, and I know costs have went up since then?
Uh, the answer would be yes, because the 12, which, remember, has the calculated imputed interest, the total hard cost projects at this point will be about 18 million plus.
Okay. So another thing is, is, Toby, why did they go from an LLC, a Pink Cabin, to an LLC of Meadow Valley when they, when they still own, uh, Pink Cabin? And do they have more assets in Pink Cabin, so they had to switch it into a, a Meadow Valley LLC because of the assets in Pink Cabin?
The, the Pink Cabin was the, the initial vehicle to put forth with it. It's very common to see developers to do an individual LLC for protection, and that's where the Meadow Valley basically came in and, and replaced the Pink Cabin. The most important thing is the principles have not changed. It's just an LLC name change for protection.
So when you change LLCs, it's a, it's a limited liability company. How does that change for, um, anything being in that LLC besides Pink Cabin? I don't know if you looked into it, might have some assets, some things in order to pay back the, the loan. Opening a new LC, LLC, I, you are correct, it's to basically protect, um, the company and open another LLC. But to me, it also, does it protect the county by having somebody open another LLC that might not have the assets or the liabilities, um, on both sides to help the county in any way changing the name from Pink Cabin to Meadow Valley?
So, Commissioner and Mr. Chair, I can assure you, I've seen the commitment letter from Dakota Bank. The financing is fully in place. So from a county's liability perspective, you're essentially a pass-through. The, the developer agreement has been signed with the Sanitation District ensuring the, the initial acceptance of the, the, the infrastructure, the warranty bond, the final acceptance, uh, financing for 100% of the project, uh, is in place. And ultimately, at the end of the day, regardless of which LLC its name is under, Jim and Andy personally guarantee it. So the difference of the LLC is liability protection, but it doesn't, uh, get them off the hook if, if they fall short of any kind of payment because they have personally guaranteed that.
Okay, so that was my point, is if it's personally guaranteed and not just the LLC, that if the LLC fails, meaning if basically the TIF fails, they are personally still involved with it, no matter what, right?
Yeah.
That's all I need to know. Thank you, Toby.
Thank you.
Any comments from the audience on this? Uh, if not, I would look for motion to approve the assignment agreement for Tax Increment Financing Finance District Number 6 is amended.
So moved.
I think you have the motion already.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you do.
We've got a motion in a second. Uh, with that being said.
Mr. Chair. Who seconded the motion?
What's that?
Who seconded the motion?
I seconded.
Commissioner Erica.
Drews?
I made the motion.
I'll second it.
And Deb seconded.
Thank you.
Okay. In favor, uh, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. On the item E.
Uh, Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item E is Preliminary Plan COPPL 24 dash 0001. It's to subdivide and create Tract A of Thoson Subdivision Number 2. Uh, the applicant landowner is Adrian Ranch LLC, Neil Adrian. Uh, the agent is Advanced Design, uh, Janelle. She's in the audience if there's any questions. Uh, location of the property is 13761 Highway 40. Uh, currently, the size of the property is 79.23 acres. Proposed Tract A will be 40.36 acres and will be vacant when any structures. Uh, current zoning is agriculture within existing land use of agriculture. Uh, access is off Thoson Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, staff is going to recommend, uh, recommend approval of Preliminary Plan, uh, COPPL 24 dash 0001 with the Planning Commission's concurrence.
Move approval with staff recommendation.
Second.
I got a motion on a second. Uh, any comments from the audience? Back to the commission. I got a motion and a second. Uh, any comments from the audience? Back to the commission. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried on the item F.
Uh, item F is comprehensive plan amendment COCA twenty-four dash zero 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 one. Is to change the future land use from ranchette district to rural residential district. The applicant landowner is Char- uh, Charles and Jenny Hansen. Uh, this was continued at the planning commission. Uh, so staff is going to recommend to continue comprehensive plan amendments COCA twenty-four dash zero 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 one to the March fifth Board of Commissioners meeting.
Alright, so move.
Second.
Okay, who made the motion?
Gary.
Gary and second by Travis. And the motion is to move to continue.
March fifth.
CA twenty-four oh one to the March fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Any comments from the audience? Back to the commission. All in favor indicate by not, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. On the item G.
Item G is rezone CORZ twenty-four dash zero 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 one. It's to rezone three acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. Uh, the applicant landowner again is Charles and Jenny Hansen. Uh, again, staff is going to recommend to continue rezone, uh, CORZ twenty-four dash zero 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 one to the March fifth Board of Commissioners meeting.
So moved. Second.
Hey, I got a motion and a second to move to continue RZ twenty-four dash oh one to the March fifth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried on the item H.
Uh, item H is comprehensive plan amendment COCA twenty-four dash zero 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 two. It's to amend the comprehensive plan to establish the future land use for a vacated right of way with no zoning. Um, to highway service district and to change the future land use from commercial district to highway service district. Uh, the applicant and landowner is Keystone Ventures Incorporated, uh, Andrew Bussey. Location of the property is two four zero three five, highway sixteen A. Um, current zoning, there is no zoning in the commer- uh, zone, commercial and highway service for a portion of it. Um. It's kind of odd to see there's a portion in here that doesn't have any zoning. Uh, it used to be right of way, uh, that the South Dakota DOT gave to, uh, uh, Keystone Ventures. Um, and then the other portion is, uh, this portion right here of this property is zoned, um, commercial. They're trying to make it all highway service as part of a plat. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending approval of comprehensive plan amendment COCA twenty-four dash zero 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 two with the planning commission's concurrence.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hattcock.
Like to thank, and I did at the planning commission, so the planning commission thanked these two gentlemen for all their hard work and following through with everything they said they would do on this property. Um, the road, um, that we approved that they said they would finish, they finished. So, um, I appreciate them and the staff working, planning department, working with them to get things done so they could move forward. Um, it's been a, I'm sure a great adventure for them and a learning experience. But our staff, I, I'll keep saying that are wonderful and they're, they're not that hard to work with. Um, we try to try, try to find solutions here in Pennington County. So, um, again, thank you guys for all your hard work and good luck with your, your properties. I, on, uh, planning department, I'll just, our planning commission, I voted, um, on approval of all of this just because of the work and that the staff also followed through and, uh, got it done. So, thank you.
Cody, we are on item H, right?
Uh, correct, yes.
Mr. Chair.
That would be a motion to move to approve CA twenty-four dash oh two.
Second.
Move.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Drews, second by Hattcock. Any comments from the audience? Uh, back to the commission. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried on the item I, which is rezone, uh, move to approve a rezone twenty-four dash oh two.
Move to approve RZ twenty-four dash zero two.
Second.
Motion made by Hattcock, second by Drews. Any comments from the audience? Back to the commission. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved on the item J, Pactola Heights.
Megan Talmitch, planner. Agenda item J is preliminary plan PPL twenty-four dash oh two. Uh, it is to reconfigure lot lines, uh, in Pactola Heights subdivision. The applicant is Pactola Heights LLC with Ben Fosland being their, um, representative. Uh, they, this, uh, preliminary plan involves the majority of the Pactola Heights subdivision. Um, and it's located near the intersection of highway forty-four and highway three eighty-five. Uh, the current zoning is rural residential district. Current land use is residential or vacant. No flood hazard on the property. Um, the applicant is requesting to consolidate twenty lots into seven lots. And, um, right now there are a total of twenty-eight lots with a well lot. And, um, the applicant has also applied for two vacation of plats to vacate a portion of right of way and the road name that will not be improved. Um, the road, other than that portion that's been requested to be vacated, has been improved to ordinance fourteen standards. Um, and they are in the process of forming a road district. The paperwork has been filed. Uh, there is a rezone and comprehensive plan amendment that has been submitted to rezone all lots that are one, that are remaining under three acres within this subdivision. All lots will be over one acre. Um, staff recommends approval of preliminary plan PPL twenty-four dash oh two with the planning commission's concurrence.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I'd move to approve PPL twenty-four dash oh two as seven conditions.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Drews, second by Hattcock. Any comments from the audience?
Mr. Chair, I, I'd just like to commend him for, uh, the work that you've done on that. It's going to be a nice, uh, development. Uh, appreciate the foresight and what you was able to do with it. So, thank you.
I will add that I was up there a couple of weeks ago and took the liberty to drive through and, and, uh, I love that recycled asphalt, you know? That's so much better than gravel. So, good work, guys, and, uh, we got a motion and a second and so. Uh, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried on the item K, vacation of plat.
Agenda item K is vacation of plat VP twenty-four dash oh one is to vacate a portion of plat and right of way along Chapel Drive.
Chair, move to approve VP twenty-four dash zero one with two conditions.
And a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second by Drews. Any comments from the audience? Back to the commission. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved on the item I.
That item L?
L.
L.
Okay.
Okay, item L.
That's okay.
Agenda item L is vacation of plat VP twenty-four dash oh two and is to vacate the road name of Chapel Drive on the plat. Um, Chapel Drive is no longer contiguous, so the road need, so we need two separate road names rather than a continuous Chapel Drive.
Move to approve VP twenty-four dash zero two with one condition.
Motion by Hattcock, second by Drews. Drews, comments from the audience? Back to the commission. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried on to item M.
Agenda item M is comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-four dash oh three. And is to establish a future land use of a right of way with no zoning to rural residential district. Um, the vacated portion of right of way will not have any zoning. Um, it will be redistributed into lots fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, which will have a zoning of rural residential. Staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-four dash oh three with planning commission's concurrence.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hattcock, second by Lassiter to move to approve CA twenty-four dash oh three. Comments from the audience? Back to the commission. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Onto item N.
Agenda item N is rezone RZ twenty-four dash oh three and it is to rezone a vacated right of way with no zoning to rural residential district. Um, just as with the item before, it is for the portion that is being vacated and, um, will be combined with lots fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen and lot fifteen revised, which will meet the three acre minimum.
Move to approve RC twenty-four dash zero three.
Second.
Motion by Hattcock, second by Lassiter to move to approve RZ twenty-four dash oh three. All, uh, in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried on the item O.
Agenda item O is comprehensive of plan, comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-three dash eleven. And is to, to change the future land use from rural residential district to low density residential district. Um, this is Pactola Heights again, and these are the lots that will remain under three acres that will need to be rezoned due to platting. Um, this item was last heard on December fifth and was denied without prejudice. The road has since been improved, um, or turnarounds planned on the preliminary plan. And so staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan CA twenty-three dash eleven with planning commission's concurrence.
Chair, move to approve CA twenty-three dash eleven. Move by.
Second.
Drews, second by Lassiter. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried on the item P.
Agenda item P is rezone RZ twenty-three dash sixteen and is to rezone, um, rural, from rural residential district to low density residential district. These are the same lots as the previous item comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-three dash eleven. Um, it was denied without prejudice on December fifth. The roads have been improved since. And staff recommends approval of rezone RZ twenty-three dash sixteen.
So move.
Second.
Drews, second by Lassiter.
Chair.
All in favor?
Chair. Hold on a sec.
Commissioner Hattcock.
Um, Megan, that's a lot for you to go through. Um, again, planning staff, Megan, you in particular on this one, a lot of work. Thank you for everything you've done for the two guys. I'm sure they appreciate you a whole lot. You're very thorough and you got it done. Um, like I said, that's a lot of conditions, a lot of different things that you had to go through to help them with. So, thank you very much, Megan. That's pretty awesome.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So Megan, when did we start this process?
Um, honestly, I don't have an exact date in mind. But they've been in our office on and off for probably, probably the past year.
Yeah, and I want to thank you too. And I want to thank the applicants for being patient with the county, but we finally got it done, so. All in favor of the motion, uh, to move to approve RZ twenty-three dash sixteen indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mr. Chair. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor of adjournment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.